It's nine o'clock and we'll call the special meeting of the Independent City Commission to order. The first item on the agenda today for action is to consider ballot language for renewing special use sales tax. I had asked Kelly to send out Attorney General's opinion number 2008-25. It's regarding sales tax, retailer sales tax considering general purpose use and also special purpose use. I thought, as we're looking at this, somebody had sent this to me and give us some background knowledge and also in the Attorney General's opinion it clarified general use and special use, that the general use is basically what it says, general, and the special use you identify the uses that the sales tax would go to. In the Attorney General's opinion, it was dealing with, I believe, Lenexa, Kansas, the city of Lenexa, Kansas, on their retail sales tax and general sales tax is considered anything when you identify all roads, all city parks, anything general. The specific would identify specific buildings and specific uses. And I had asked Kelly to verify that as we go through our language, that the bond attorney that's helping prepare the language had reviewed the Attorney General's opinion and that we were following statutes. So Kelly, would you want to fill us in on your discussions with the bond attorney?
Well, I actually emailed him the opinion and he, of course, said he was aware of it and they have reviewed the language and your latest modifications have modifications that they recommended, so, I mean, they are the experts, I feel comfortable with their advice.
Okay. So Commissioners, do you have any questions about the Attorney General's opinion?
We are using the term "special use." Is the language in that document "specific use"? Does it say "specific use sales tax" or does it say "special use sales tax"?
I would have to have an opportunity to review this further, but just glancing at it, I don't see where, I don't see that language unless one of you gentlemen does.
Just as long as we're consistent, that's just, you know, if we're consistent with that ruling, I'm okay.
I will ask the question, though.
What page are you looking at in the document?
I was just looking at the ballot language.
Okay. We've identified it as a special use and I think in the Attorney General's opinion, it kind of leads "special purposes," is determined by the degree of specificity stated by the city.
As long as he's also using the word "special," I think we're in line with that.
So before we go to actually the county commission, or county clerk for logging it in, we'll hear back just to double check that they have.
Send him that question.
They have confirmed. Okay. That was, well, I wanted us all to be familiar with Attorney General's opinion and make sure we got our ducks in a row on that. So today, we're going to be looking at specifically the language regarding the percentages and then also since our last meeting, as Kelly and Lacy went through developing, answering some of the questions concerning previous expenses and how the money had been used for the last 10 years. The mill levy support and debt repayment item had been separated into individual line items. Kelly, would you like to explain what you found on that?
Previously, on our previous bond issue, it had the 25 percent, it said mill levy and debt repayment, but in reality, the debt repayment portion was being paid out of those other quarters, it wasn't being paid out of that quarter. That quarter was gone completely to mill levy support and I believe you received an email from Mr. Royce that talked about that as well. And so what they were doing is they were taking the bond payments out of like streets and sidewalks and ADA, those, because we had 25 percent for each, or 50 percent total, and so they were taking those bond payments out of those groups. And so in order to more accurately reflect what is occurring, I did modify and add one for continued mill levy support by itself, which would be the 25 percent, which is consistent with what we've done to keep the mill levy down, and then added a separate category for debt support that actually would be used for debt. Lacy indicated that would make it easier for her to track. If you do not do that, then we would have to do what we did before and take those debt payments out of those other categories depending on what the debt related to.
I think one of the questions that came up from citizens were regarding streets and roads, that the special use sales tax indicated that we were going to be doing more and gave the impression, but actually, we had some bonds that were issued that was paying, the money was going to pay the bonds for the streets.
Yes, and we still, some of those bonds will outlive this current sales tax, so that will, some of that will go on to the next sales tax because we are committed to paying those.
When I was visiting with Kelly about this and with the bond payment, I know we've got some roadwork that we're considering bonding to do the Main Street KDOT project and the cost share project.
West Maple.
The West Maple cost share. And with those, we know, so we might as well include those in that section of our special use sales tax now. And then also trying to project within the next 10 years, what other projects would be coming along to allow us to bond those. We know definitely we've got a pumper truck and some other lease purchase that could be financed through that category and also some other building projects. So it seems, it seemed to me the best way, that way we can guarantee our mill levy support is being covered and I guess transparency is improved too, instead of having one category with both, because we are trying to relieve some of the ad verum taxes and with this, it does designate that we are protecting our mill levy with the category separate and then the debt repayment for bonding. Commissioners, all open for questions or comments on your ideas concerning the separation from mill levy support and debt payment into separate categories?
Well, I would agree that this is, it's really whether it makes the finance director's job easier or not, this type of transparency is essential to us being able to report back to the citizens that these monies have been spent according to their wishes. And so dividing this up and improving reporting accuracy, which should be one of our goals anyway, in whatever we do.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I like the way it's set up. It offers transparency and it gives a breakdown and I think people have a right to know what is being supported by it, where that money's coming from. I think it's good and I hope it's a help to the finance department as far as keeping everything, excuse me, it's keeping track of everything. I hope it makes it somewhat more easy.
I think when they're grouped together, the actual percentage is undetermined. It's an annual judgment of how much money of our sales tax is going to go to mill levy support. This way, by separating it and giving the percentage, then that amount will be dedicated to mill levy support so that as a fluctuation of property valuation, we can keep a constant amount coming from sales tax. So it's not depending just upon the valuation of your property, but we'll have that steady income that will only fluctuate with sales tax revenue. So we're all in agreement to go from the four items to five items with item A being mill levy support and item B debt repayment of financing. In our packet, Kelly, you had highlighted some words, were those just to draw attention or were those additions to our original?
Those are modifications to what you previously approved that we're recommending that you approve. The continued mill levy support was suggested by Tony and then the, because we thought on the debt repayment, you may want to also use that for lease purchase, so I visited with the bond attorney and he suggested the change to make that for debt repayment of financings and strike that other language on the general obligation bonds, so that would cover any debt that you wish to use that for. And then I added the including but not limited to streets, sidewalks, buildings, facilities, equipment and required ADA. And I did that just so that people wouldn't understand that, you know, they're just see debt repayment, they don't understand what that's for and that is what it would be for, so just additional transparency there. I just cleaned up some things on the ADA language, so it was consistent throughout because the ADA related to buildings and facilities would be paid out of that percentage, the ADA related to streets and sidewalks would be paid out of that percentage. So I just wanted to clear that up a little bit, so that's why I made that modifications.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think the clarification will eliminate some questions where we eliminated the 25 percent for ADA and now considering that ADA covers many gamuts, then we're not so particularly of which line item, if we've got ADA requirements in a building, we're modify, well, how much comes out of ADA? How much comes out of the building?
Right.
That it can be grouped and the same with streets too. In item E, where we're talking about economic development incentives, we've identified the typical considerations of business retention and recruitment, but also then we've identified memorial hall improvements, initiatives for new recreational facilities, senior citizen center, wayfinding signs, housing initiatives, airport improvements, healthcare facility expansion, industrial park improvements, beautification initiatives and expanded community broadband access. So the thought is in looking at these, that there's some in-house economic development in issues that the city should develop or might find need to participate in. So we're including those items to utilize some economic development money for ourselves without relying strictly on a building or fund separate from economic development. Commissioners, are you in agreement with that thought too? Commissioner Hayes?
I agree with the changes that Kelly has presented to us this morning.
Okay.
I'm in agreement also, Mayor.
With that, we're in agreement with the modification of the language since our last meeting, then I think the next step would be the spreadsheet. Shall we start looking at the spreadsheet, Kelly, and we can kind of start looking for mill levy support and debt repayment of financing?
And I would suggest that you continue that 25 percent on the continued mill levy support, that's what we had before and it's consistent. So in all the options I put forth, I had 25 percent for that and I would suggest you continue that because that's what we are already doing in actuality and that would keep that same level of support for our mill levy.
Then on the bond repayment or debt repayment, would you want to go through your spreadsheet and explain?
Well, basically what I did is, there's no way I could put all the potential expenses on the spreadsheet, it would be so difficult to read. So I know one thing the finance director was concerned is making sure that we are able to pay those payments when they come in on the bond. So I took the highest payment that would be required annually. Now, that's not every year and as you can see at the very top, it shows you what the average would be, but I took the highest payment so that they'd be able to make that payment. Now, and then I plugged that in, in different scenarios.
Would you want to put the spreadsheet up on the screen?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
And then the first one is what we are currently doing with the current, and I'm going to pull this down on six feet away from you. It's what we're doing on our current one to show you how that is currently being paid. And I also included the street projects that we've been taking out of economic development transportation because that was brought up, whether we would leave that there or if you would modify that. Not suggesting you modify that, I just wanted to show it on the spreadsheet. And we put $250,000 on that and then our current.
Which line?
On the current, where it says current.
Okay.
So here, this would represent your resurfacing program, the 250,000 annual estimated resurfacing. And on the current, it is being paid out of, let me go over here so you can see, Economic Development Transportation Fund is where that comes out of. Then the two bond payments, these two, the 409 to 316 equal the highest amount under our current bonds that are obligated during the term of this sales tax. And as you can see, they're coming out of improvements to streets and sidewalks and ADA. They are not coming out of debt repayment and mill levy support. So that's what we are currently doing. Then I carried it down and I left those same categories in option one because I didn't know if you were going to add an additional category or not. And I just wanted to show if we did the same level of mill levy support and you wanted to take bond payments out of that percentage, it's, you're going to be in the hole, it's not, you're not going to be able to do that. You would have to still, if you kept those categories the way they were, then you would have to do what you did previously and take them out of the streets and sidewalks or something like that, because there wouldn't be enough money to amortize that debt. And option two, the only, I think the only change, let's see, excuse me. Go down here. Option two, I modified the percentage to actually cover the mill levy support and the debt repayment out of that actual category to show you what percentage it would take to amortize both of those and continue the same level of mill levy support. And if you can see, that would take 62 percent of the sales tax. And this is based on an average of 1.9 in receipts, which is about where we've been, 1.9 million. So that would modify that percentage to 62 percent in order to, and you'd still be in the hole a little bit, but, and then that shows still the 250,000 coming out of the economic development transportation for street resurfacing. And then option three, is where we modified and add that additional category and to make the highest payment, the 710,518, out of debt repayment, it would take 38 percent of the sales tax. Now, just, that's not every year that it's that amount, but I just showed the highest amount, because you know it drops after a few years and David's our expert on the bond repayment. And then I left the mill levy support on the 25 percent, but as you can see, that doesn't leave a lot of percentage left for those other categories. But then again, you are not, you are not paying debt out of those, so that money would be available for projects that you want to pay for with cash. And then out of that, I still took the 250,000 out of the economic development. You can see everything's in the black over there. Of course, like I said, there's other projects that come out of this, I just wanted to show these two big ones. And then the fourth option is the same for the 475,000 for the mill levy support and then the debt repayment. Let's see, it shows that at 38 percent, which is the same as above. And then all I did on that one is I moved the resurfacing up into the sales tax and took it out of the Economic Development Transportation Fund. And then if you move over, what I did over here is I added up the economic development that could be available, because if you didn't take that money out of the Economic Development Transportation Fund, you'd have that money left, that's for franchise fees in addition to whatever you levy for sales tax. So you've got a couple of different sources that you could use for economic development purposes, but there is some of the things that come out of that fund currently, so they would have to modify that a little bit. So those are just different scenarios I put in and I can change the percentages on these if you want to see how much, a different percentage, how much that would generate in revenue. But these are just some things for you to look at, just to kind of see what would be needed in order to pay, amortize the highest payment and then what would happen if you moved that resurfacing into sales tax instead of economic development and then combine those, as those could both be sources for economic development initiatives if you wanted to.
Okay. Let's start with the debt repayment. Since we've separated the two categories, let's just consider option three or four, but in both of them, you've saying we need 38 percent.
If you want to amortize that full amount from debt repayment, you know, you don't have that every year, but you're anticipating adding additional debt. So if you do any additional projects and those debt repayment, it's going to be more than, than, you know, when it drops off, if you do additional debt, it's going to go back up. So some of that depends on how much new debt you plan to levy, on how much money you would need to amortize that. But if you had a debt payment of 700 and some thousand dollars, you're going to need 38 percent to make that payment.
Currently, what is our debt payment annually?
I'll let David Schwanker cover that because he put that table together.
Kelly, while he's looking for that, the amount of these bond payments, they drop after 2026, is that right?
Yes, and that bond schedule is in your book here, yes.
Yeah, it's quite a change.
Yes, it goes from, let's see, so you've got, it drops from, in, through 2026, you've got 700 and some thousand through 2026. Then in 2027, it drops down to like 157, but that's assuming you're not issuing any new debt for any other projects.
Right.
And if you add any additional debt, which I have all the different, we have the draft financing analysis for everything from 2 million to 10 million in projects, so you would know what that amount would be.
Sure.
But yeah, but it doesn't drop down till 2026, so you've got a while to pay that still, and you've got to have a way to make that payment.
Right.
So if you don't take it out of debt repayment, you'll have to take it out of one of the other categories.
Currently, right now, for 2020, we're looking about 685,000 total for principal and interest. Yes.
And that represents, what, about 30 percent of our sales tax? Is 25, it's about?
I'd say it's about 35 percent.
35 percent.
Of course, all of that's being paid out of the current sales tax through 2022.
Right. What, I guess what I'm trying to visualize, how much then we would have at 38 percent over the required, we need 35 percent in there just to make our payment, correct?
Yes.
Well, that was for 2020.
That's for 2020.
And this new sales tax, it won't be that amount, it's going to be the 710.
Okay, and?
Which is the 38 percent.
For how many years?
It drops off after 2026, so 2027, it goes down to 157, 550, but that's if you do not issue any new debt. And remember, that category's also for lease purchases and things like that.
Right.
And right now, we're just, the only thing I put in there was for what we are committed to for bonds already.
Right. Because I'm trying to get an idea of where we are now, our minimum, but then if we're considering new lease purchase or new bond, what we're going to have to do or how long it would be before we could incur that? Right now, if we're at 35 percent, that doesn't include bonds for the two street projects, correct? That's what I forgot to do.
I better check, I may have forgot that too.
Do I have to throw it against the wall?
Oh, no, don't do that. You might not be able to put it back together.
So the bond payment for those two projects would begin?
Let me bring up the bond schedule. Let's see.
David, can I ask a question real quick while we're paused here? And that is that the Series 2016A General that is that the Series 2016A general obligation bond is currently funded by the education sales tax, and it ends on, in the year 2026. Those monies then go toward paying off the bond, or those monies then that are going towards the Series 2016A bond, go towards paying off the bonds for the schools, structures, the schools, the school district bonds?
Yes, all those, all those monies go to the school district.
So my question then is that, that seems like a inconsequential to our consideration at this point in time. Why would we include a education sales tax bond in our consideration for special use sales tax if it was never funded by special use sales tax and won't be, and those funds will not go towards additional city debt until the educations, or the, the school district bonds are paid off in 2031 and 2032?
Well, currently, the 2016 bonds were to pay for the, I believe, the infrastructure around the Jefferson School.
So you're saying that presumably then that infrastructure is, was, was that new infrastructure, or was that just improvements to existing infrastructure that was in place?
No, I believe that was new infrastructure.
I see.
New streets and utility extensions?
Correct.
So once again, I just, I'm, I'm having trouble seeing the relevance of including that debt within our consideration for special use sales tax dollars.
I, I don't believe it is considered in there.
Okay, so I see the total of the bonds at, total bond and interest is in excess of what we're seeing on this particular spreadsheet that Kelly prepared for us, where our average, let's see, our average currently is 583 with a maximum highest payment of 725,000. And then looking ahead, our maximum or highest payment would be 710,000. Do you see where I'm talking?
Yes.
At the top of this spreadsheet.
Those are for the?
Represent then in this spreadsheet on the summary, the bond interest summary, where I can find either the 725,000 highest payment for 2022, or the $710,000 payment for 2023. Am I missing that? I see 710,550 in 2024.
For 2022, that's the, the Series 2013, 2015, and 2019 bonds.
And excluding the 2016 bond and?
Correct.
Should get me to 710,000. I see where that is now. For 2022... I'm sorry, David. I see $710,000 if I take the 2016 bond out of the 2022 total principal. And then if I take, adding the interest back, I go substantially higher than, than either of the total bond payments. So how do I get to either 725 or $710,000 in either 2022 or 2023 from the bonds interest summary spreadsheet?
If, if you add the 2023 bonds that are due that year?
2023?
Yes, that is 710,000 total principal and interest.
Let me do that.
And that's for the 13, 15, and 19 series.
So I see three, a total of $935,000 for 2023 for bond principal, less the $220,000 for the 2016 bond. I get 715. Where is, am I still looking at the wrong numbers there, David?
Do you have to take out the interest as well on the next level?
Take, add in or take out?
Take out.
I take out the $25,000 worth of interest on the 2016 bond? I still have an additional $74,000 worth of interest adding back to the 715. How do I get to either the 725,000 for 2022, or the $710,000 for 2023 in terms of highest payment for debt?
I'm not sure what.
Maybe I should bring my paperwork over there. May I?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I have created a much longer question and answer session here than I thought.
No, that's fine.
Well, I think I, I think I figured it out here.
Okay, good.
2015, 50% of that is paid out of water and sewer.
So don't consider this split?
Yes.
That's coming out of the enterprise?
Yes. And I think that should get you to where you want.
So take out that additional $60,000 here, that takes it down to 650, and then add back this less 20, so add back 90.
Take back the interest, take out the interest, yeah.
That's the correction I was looking for.
Yes, sorry.
If you work with the same numbers, you get the same answer. How about that?
That's what's hard with the distance and, you know, with, if it was on the screen with a pointer, it would help. But following what you discussed then, the numbers related to taking out the bond and interest payment for the infrastructure related to the educational tax, and?
And the split for water and sewer.
And what?
There's a split where one of them's paid 50% by water sewer, one by special use sales tax.
Okay.
So the $700,000 figure that was the maximum payment, I think Lacy had figured that for us, so, that that was the one we needed to make sure that we could amortize. So that's, we should have probably had another table that, that showed all of those without, with those already taken out. I apologize for that.
I was just trying to tie the values from this spreadsheet to the one that we're using for our, our data set.
Okay.
Our detail. And that's what did it. Thank you, David.
So if I understand right, Kelly, the educational tax bond, then some is from ad florum tax, and then some comes from the water sewer relating to the infrastructure?
No, that's the Series 2015 bonds.
Okay, okay. So?
The educational ones are paid out of that 1% that the, the school got for 20 years?
Yes.
That's where that money comes from.
Okay.
That was like the street improvements, the sidewalks and things over at 13th and Mulberry.
Okay. So after our infrastructure is paid out of that 1% school tax, then all of it goes for their bond relief?
Correct.
Okay. So that doesn't apply into what we're talking about, our, our debt?
No.
Because that infrastructure was coming from a separate category, not special use?
Right.
Okay. Saying that's where the numbers related on the big spreadsheet. Take that into consideration, okay? So... Then, the original, or the, the question about, well, we have currently annual bond is 685,000, it's 30%, 35% now. For 38%, what, how much money is that projected to generate?
The 38% will generate 722,000.
700 what?
722,000 for 38%.
Okay.
And if you want me to put a different percentage in, I can, and it will automatically calculate it, so.
No, and the bonds start dropping off then in?
After 2023, they start dropping off.
2023?
Correct.
So that would be one year into our new, our new special use, should it pass? So 37,000 a year?
No, 722,000 is annual, at 38%.
Yeah. But for, we're, to service our current bonds, we need 685,000. So for one year, we'll, we'll be over that by 37,000.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Then in 20... 2022, we'll have 37,000 in 2023. There was another. For the, the two road projects, when would payment be required on those if we bonded them?
I, I would think it would depend on when the bond got passed. Typically, they start probably the next year after it's passed.
How does that sequence with our, so those bond payments would be occurring prior to the passing of the special use sales tax?
Correct.
Okay.
Like our, the Series 2019 bonds, our first payment is this, is coming up here in September.
Okay. So does the 38, I guess the question, does the 38% allow us to do what we're projecting to have need of?
It depends on how much additional debt you, you issue during that time period.
This just covers existing debt, no new.
The maximum payment for existing debt. And then anything left would be for what you're issuing for new debt.
And of those two projects that were mentioned, what, what dollar amount are we looking at? I believe, wasn't the West Maple Street project, like 1,041,000? And I don't remember what the West Main Street was.
Yeah, I just, I would need to look it up. And you also have those two CCLIP projects that we will probably resubmit, that we did not get funded. And there'll be other projects that you don't know today.
Sure.
That you will be applying for, that, you know, in the future. And I may just have to get you that number.
Okay.
Because I don't have it super handy here.
I was just taking a rough guess, but I was thinking that between the two, it's probably close to $2 million. It could be off 100,000, but pretty close to that. And those are the ones that we know about, and that doesn't count what you've already brought up?
Right, because you don't know what future grants you're going to apply for and, and things like that, what grants you'll get awarded, and what projects you decide you want to move forward without, even if you don't get the grant, like we, that one piece of West Main didn't get the grant, but you guys are moving forward with that. You may have some more of those as well.
Sure.
We try to leverage your funds if we can, but we're not going to get every grant, of course, we apply for.
Right, I understand.
In 2026, that's where you said we start dropping off, what?
Actually, 2024.
Okay. The street project and?
Because the 2026 is the last one where you have the infrastructure on the sales tax, and that one drops off, but that's not paid out of the sales tax.
By 2027, it's, it shows a payment of $140,000.
Yes, that's principal.
And that's principal.
And then you've got another eight, seven, seven, five on each of those for interest.
So that's quite a, quite a drop for the previous year of 2026, so yeah. But as you say, we'll be adding more debt on that as we continue to move forward on some of these projects we've already approved.
And that's why we gave you the financing analysis for 2 million to 10 million, so you'd know what those annual payments would be.
It's kind of a balancing act that we, we need to generate enough revenue now to service our debts. But then as they start dropping off, we're not over generating money that we just have it, we've got to spend it type thing. But logically, looking at what's coming up, too, that there will be projects that we need to take on. That we would be replacing some bonds. So although initially 38... So although initially thirty-eight percent covers our existing expenses, looking, once the bonds start dropping off, it wouldn't really generate excessive funds, because in that, we could, we also have the option of streets. Currently, our emergency vehicles, police are coming out of Ad Florum, aren't they? None of them are being financed from the special use sales tax.
No, because it wasn't really designed that way originally.
Right.
Um, the cost share project is two point six million, KDOT shares one point six, and the city shares a little over a million on the cost share project.
And that was not our portion, but that was total?
The city's portion's a little over a million dollars, city matching.
Okay.
And then KDOT's providing us almost one point six.
Okay.
And it's a two point six million dollar project, a little over.
So commissioners, with that, do you feel thirty-eight percent would be adequate for looking at the numbers that we've received and looking at future needs that would be coming up, requiring bonds?
Personally, I, I understand the need to, uh, to use debt to fund some of these projects, because, uh, without that, you assume that you have at any instant enough cash in the bank to pay the bills. So if that's not the case, then you have, uh, a need to use debt to get you through a period of time while you're accumulating the cash to pay it. So I understand it's a cash flow question. Um, and looking at our conversation thus far, we really have focused on uh, the years of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, where we have a kind of anomalous in terms of this series of, of debt funding, uh, a, about a two hundred thousand dollar bump in total debt that then resolves, uh, in two, twenty twenty-four. I really have a preference, um, to, because we have, uh, I personally have a, a concern about the quality of our, our streets. To understand how much of that debt would be associate, I'm sorry, I'm hearing static, do you, is that you?
Is there somebody on there that you can mute? Kenny Mutter? Okay.
Okay, there it is. Uh, therefore, uh, as I look at how much, what percentage to put towards debt repayment, I really would prefer not to, um, rationalize, uh, thirty-eight percent as a target without understanding, um, whether a specific portion of that will go to, uh, streets. A quick math that I have been relying on for this logic is that a mill and overlay for a city street, uh, runs roughly, give or take, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for a mile. And this is for both, both directions of traffic. So if you have, and this is also an estimate, but we have roughly fifty miles worth of streets here in Independence, Kansas, and if we set some kind of goal, for instance, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards, um, towards those types of street repairs, uh, then it will take us fifty years to go through the cycle, to, to touch the, each of the miles of streets here in Independence. And we know for a fact that, uh, streets don't last that long, that they need more care. And I would really like to see that, uh, uh, value up around, um, well, I, to at least maybe breach the twenty-year cycle to, uh, to get underneath twenty years in terms of the cycle that we're using to repair those streets, to improve upon what our current rate is. You know, I don't know how to value that at this point in time, I would need to rely upon, uh, the criteria for repair and the, you know, the quality of the street, the quality of the subgrade, the quality of the, or the, the amount of traffic. There's all kinds of criteria that either accelerate or decelerate as streets age. But if we could get to two and a half miles worth of street resurfaced or repaired uh, a year, then we would be at twenty years. That, if, if we use all of that rough math, uh, then two hundred thousand times two and a half would be five hundred thousand dollars a year in terms of investment in, in repavement of city streets. What we've got here, looks like in, uh, in most of these considerations, is an initial two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for repaving, coming out of the Economic Development slash Transportation Fund. Ultimately, I'd like to see at least that much coming, uh, out of special use sales tax in addition to that. We have thrown economic development, transportation into our conversation this morning, but I really thought that that was already decided, uh, prior to walking in here this morning. But now I see, uh, that based on the new data, that it's kind of in the mix. I, uh, I would prefer that we consider two hundred and fifty thousand, both from economic development slash transportation and special use sales tax. Even though we know for a fact that some of those projects are going, going to require some kind of gap funding because of the magnitude of, of certain, uh, street repairs. Certain street repairs are extremely expensive relative to just mill and overlay. So, uh, some of those years, we're going to have spikes, and we're going to have to use funding to get through that. Saying all of that, the thirty-eight percent is based upon an instantaneous two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three maximum, without any kind of tie back to streets. And I would prefer that some, in some way, that our language that we decide upon for special use sales tax, just includes enough money to, to accelerate our street repairs back to once, at, once every twenty years.
One, one option on that is, and I copied and pasted and did an option five, is to, which included taking the two hundred and fifty thousand out of sales tax for streets and sidewalks. And then I added the two hundred and fifty thousand to come back out of the Economic Development Transportation Fund in additional, which would get you that five hundred thousand dollars.
What's the percentage then for streets that you're looking at?
It would still be, uh, it's twenty percent on the sales tax. But you have to remember, I don't know when you're, in your two hundred thousand per, per mile, Dean, were you considering any ADA improvements? Or was that just strictly mill and overlay?
It was strictly mill and overlay, I believe.
Because that does add to the cost of those, and once you touch those streets, you do have to do that. And some of the older neighborhoods, depending on, on the kind of condition they are, sometimes that can add to the cost. So just, just bringing that up to let you know that, that addition, you know, if you do the two and a half miles, we will have to have some additional ADA, related ADA work.
Yes, and it's been, I'm just using roughly, uh, based on this year's budgeted projects, about fifty percent add for ADA, is that correct? Does that sound about right?
Uh, where did Dave go? Uh, it, it all depends, because some of the, Mike, you're here. Some, some of the streets that were picked on this next one, um, did not have any ADA. It just kind of depends on where they're at, if there's existing sidewalks.
Well, I, I understand that, I was looking for a working rule of thumb for this particular conversation. So, um, yeah, I get that, and I get that ADA is expensive. And, um, and if we don't, um, if we don't put it into our conversation, then ultimately, it just all comes back to refining our debt. And we're going to have to use the debt repayment for those cost overruns. What did I, what's the best way to summarize what I just said? And that is, I would like to exclude the Economic Development slash Transportation Fund, uh, from our conversation. And just focus on, what are we going to get from special use sales tax for streets, uh, and sidewalk improvements, including ADA?
Okay, because, so we're currently taking the resurfacing money out of that fund. Uh, is, are you wanting, on your five hundred thousand you're trying to get to, the question would be, do you want that five, five hundred thousand to come out of purely sales tax? Do you want to continue having a portion of that out of economic development and a mix with, um, with the sales tax? Or, I mean, we kind of need to know that to make that determination.
I just find that the Economic Development Transportation Fund standing by itself here, without the entirety of the budget in front of us for consideration, seems anomalous. And that it really, if, if we're going to pull in the rest of the budget, then let's pull in the rest of the budget. Otherwise, let's exclude economic, the Economic Development Transportation Fund from this conversation.
But then the Economic Development Transportation Fund affects the economic development money that we're talking about of the special use sales tax too.
Yes, it does, and so does the street and, uh, the street department budget, where we have also road, road repair, uh, materials included, uh, and road repair labor included. So there's, there's money in there, and here, and there, and so we, we're talking about combining all these bucketed costs into a single analysis. And, you know, I just, I think that this, to some degree, clouds the issue. But, uh, but so does this assumption that, uh, that debt repayment stands alone as a, as a category, when in fact, debt is used across all categories, virtually every time. Because I'm not, I'm not sure how much of this we actually pay with cash. So a lot of it we pay with debt funding anyway. I'd say probably the majority, we pay with debt funding, not with, uh, cash. So, I said all of that to, uh, to get to this point, and that is that what we should be deciding here amongst ourselves today is how much of the special use sales tax we want to go towards street funding versus, um, debt funding. I guess, uh, if we're, if the debt drops off, so this goes into effect in October of twenty twenty-two. So for a single year of the next ten years, we know what the debt level maximum is. But we don't know what the debt level maximum is for nine of those ten years. I'm, uh, I'm back to where you were was, which is, what projects do we know? What do we know about the projects and the debt that we're going to acquire? And how much do we need to put into special use sales tax to cover that debt? And presumably, then, if you looked, if you excluded twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, and just looked at what it was before and what it was after, we'd have a, kind of a better, uh, target of what the debt would be, without looking at those two years, which seem to be, a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than either the year before or the year after.
And what the, uh, what I kind of envision is with the debt repayment, is regarding streets, that you would use, uh, that to provide any full base replacement street. If you're looking at a, say, a twenty-year bond, with a milling and overlay, we're looking seven to ten years. So let's not get a bond for a street that's going to wear out before it's paid off. So, you know, if we're looking at, at the debt repayment for streets, it's like the main street. Anything downtown, uh, I think we're going to have to look at, with the traffic, and as it deteriorates, more of a full base replacement in the, the primary streets, where milling and overlay comes into the, the transportation aspect. But then, where we've got economic development, transportation, and we've got transportation, now we're reaching into two pockets, and really adding another, because we've got an economic development. So is it simpler to say we're going to have economic development so that our special use sales tax will supplement the franchise tax and all that go to economic development? And then we look at milling and overlay being streets and sidewalks totally? So then we can start with, the franchise tax was two hundred thirty-five, two hundred fifty thousand a year. So how much do we want to supplement that with the special use sales tax? And then put the five hundred thousand, or what you're, you're talking about, for streets and sidewalks, generate that into the, the sidewalk. But then it doesn't give you two pockets to pull out of for streets either. So it's kind of depending on how we want to look in the future. If we want to keep being able to draw from economic and transportation, or if we want to set up separate, all transportation is coming from one's item of special use sales tax. I think it's, there's pros and cons going either way, that for ten years, we're designating, streets to come out of one area, after ten years, then you've got to come back and modify where's that coming? Then maybe reestablish it. But that total amount, if, if we're going to commit two hundred and fifty thousand from economic development, transportation, and then supplement another two fifty, then it modifies how much money we want to generate in the economic category too. So.
Well, we were looking at flexibility and, and not being contained, being able to draw from more than just one pot.
Right.
And that was the whole, whole idea behind this concept. Uh, not be so restrictive that, well, if we had been more flexible, we would have more opportunities to, to use some of that money in areas that we have critically come up and that we, we need. So I think if we keep that in mind, that gives us the direction that we need to, we need to go, we need to follow. We want that flexibility, so we're not tied down, because we, we don't know what's going to come up in the future. I mean, with, with, uh, as far as debt, what type of road projects we're going to continue to take on. But we want the flexibility to be able to, um, uh, use those funds accordingly to meet whatever the current need is of that year and, and pre, and the years ahead.
Well, if we, if we establish the debt, debt repayment, then the funds that's generated there, do they have to go to payment of a bond only?
No, but we changed that, so you could use it for lease purchase or short-term financing, whatever you wanted to do.
So, okay, say we've got, what were you saying?
Yes.
Dean, how many miles, uh, a year were you projecting in your study?
Just, just for an improvement target, I'd say two and a half miles a year.
And I did figure out the percentage that if you wanted to fund that five hundred thousand from sales tax on its own, out of streets and sidewalks, you would need twenty-seven percent.
Well, can we, if, with the bond, the debt repayment, can we do two and a half miles of street and take the money out of that fund? Also, since it's not bonded, it's just a contract amount.
Well, it would have to be considered debt financing, so you would have to finance it.
Okay.
But you could do, just like you do a lease purchase or something, you could do a short-term financing. I, I can ask the bond attorney if there's, um, if he wants to reword that. But basically, you're, um, just wanting to utilize it to pay cash, and right now, it's worded as finance. as financing.
What I'm wondering...
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, it does it, because if we're not, we don't want to generate money in there that has to be tied to a bond that we can't use somewhere else if we, and we don't want to create bonds just to use the money.
And that's my concern.
Yeah. So, you know, how, I think now we have to look at, you can't do a lease purchase on a mill and overlay, but if we could structure, then we don't want to get a, again, a 20-year bond on a, a seven-year street.
That doesn't make any sense at all, does it?
No.
You could have three bonds on the same stretch of road.
Yeah.
Be paying on three different bonds on the same stretch of road.
So...
So I was just, that whole conversation is just to kind of help me clarify in my mind whether 38% is the right amount for debt repayment. If it were 31%, I'm, I'm looking at option four now on your spreadsheet. And if it were 31% and streets and sidewalk improvements were 27%, that would solve for a value for the estimated annual total going to streets and sidewalks of 500. And what is that value for 31% towards debt repayment?
So change debt repayment to 31%?
Yes.
And then leave streets and sidewalks at 27%?
Yeah.
And then what I did, that, that's 83%. So you have 17% to allocate to buildings and economic development. So which, how, how would you like to put that in?
Well, you have 12% to buildings and 5% to economic development right now.
Okay, I can plug those back in.
That gets you to the 100% and that...
So option six...
All, all of that is an exclusion of the idea that Economic Development Fund stands alone.
Yes.
Doesn't, isn't taken into consideration.
So I, I plug those percentages in in an option six on your screen, which is 25, 31, 12, 27, and 5.
So on that, on option, okay, that option by going from 20 to 27% on street and sidewalk improvements, including ADA, that would make that total go from 380,000 to 513,000 dollars a year?
Yes.
Okay. And then going from 38 to 31% on 722,000 dollars, what is that adjusted amount?
589,000 for debt repayment. Here, I need to fix this here. So that means that the year that you had the, to make the 710, 518, you're, you would have to pull 121, 518 out of another source.
What would that source likely be?
David?
Cash?
Cash, or you'd have to increase, establish a mill levy for the bond and interest fund.
What year would that be?
2023? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, let's see, so this, yeah, 2023 would be the 2023 budget year.
So if we knew that was coming though, it gives us two years to build up a reserve to cover it too, wouldn't it?
Yes.
So...
We have a couple of reserve accounts that we'll be considering later on in this meeting that are the capital reserve accounts. Just a couple of them, account 21 and 22 both have, at the current time, 250, 244,000 dollars in those two accounts. Those are capital reserve accounts.
Well...
Just some, some...
What about the five mil that, I don't remember if it was designated commissioners?
Maybe that's account number 12. I should have looked at that first. It currently stands at 2, 307,000 dollars in that account.
I, I have a question, and I'm probably going to get this number wrong. Is it fund? There's a fund that we've been drawing money out for making street improvements and it's leftover money. It was fund maybe 72 or fund 94. One was ADA and one was streets. And I think there's a balance left in both of those.
I think you were talking about fund 92, the 2015, 16 Clink projects?
Yes. And there's a balance of money in that.
318,000 in there.
And that's where we've been drawing some of the money for improvements on streets in, in the past. And we've, we've drawn that fund down.
I think there was other street improvements that had money in those, and I think we drew on those.
Oh, okay. And not that particular fund that we're referencing?
And zeroed out those accounts, yes.
Too. So we still have that money?
Yeah, we still have some of those, yes.
Okay. And that can be used only for streets? It's, it's pretty specific of what it can be used for?
Yes.
Street improvements?
A few years back, the, when we were doing budgets, the commissioners said we wanted to designate five mil for streets, large equipment purchases and repayment. Is that the capital project reserve?
I, I believe so.
Okay. So, you know, we've actually got that other fund too to draw on for some of these projects.
And it would serve as our stopgap for 2023 as we go, have a little bit of a shortfall that year, but we'll be rebounding the next year.
Right.
And that's assuming you don't issue any new bonds?
It does assume that we will have the ability to acquire up to, we said, 589,000 dollars of payments going forward per year, right?
Yes.
So in 2024, if you take away the 65,000 for water and sewer and streets, and if you take away the 589 minus 65,000 minus 280,000, 275,000? That leaves a bond payment increase that we have yet to define of 249,000 dollars henceforth for '24, '25, and '26. And then 500 and, over 500,000 dollars for '26 and beyond that we have yet to define.
If we're going to designate the special use sales tax to cover the, the areas that five mil initially covered, then that five mil could be eliminated or, or used to cover some of these stopgap additional bonds during this time till the, the bonds start dropping off from the special use sales tax.
Now, that, that five mil that we're talking about, that, that's making the payments on the new fire apparatus.
Yes, that's one.
And, and then the other use is, but we pretty much have depleted that five mil.
I would have to...
Probably within maybe 20,000 dollars.
I'd have to go and look and see. I'm not quite sure, I haven't looked at that.
Okay. I'm just trying to remember what, what it all went for. But in the fire payments, like 98, 99,000 roughly, roughly?
Yes.
A year? And that's carried out for seven?
Yeah, I think we've got six more years left.
Six more years left, okay. Because we put some money down on that. And then I was just trying to determine where the balance of that money went out of that five mil. My, it escapes my memory right now. Gentlemen, you remember or have an idea? So in...
Right now, the balance, like Dean said, was 307,000. After the 97,577 dollars came out, I assume that was a fire truck?
Yes.
Payment? Do you recall what else is coming out of there?
I don't, I do not.
Okay.
At that rate, if nothing else is coming out, you're, you're gaining over 100,000 dollars a quarter in that fund at this point. I, I say all of that just to justify the move of those, those, that percentage from 38 down to 31. As it's being safe to do so based on what we know to be relatively true at this point, which is we have some money in capital reserve to cover any debt financing shortfall in the, in a single year. And if the debt continues on this schedule, then we'll have enough plus, more than enough to pay the, the year after.
Okay. Commissioner Yoususi, how do you feel on those figures?
Yeah, I, I like the, I, what's been presented so far, because streets and sidewalks were one of the driving factors that people have wanted to see improvements made. Excuse me, I've got allergies. That they wanted to see improvements made. And I like, I like what's been proposed to bump up that dollar amount to, to continue to put more resources toward that because the input that I've gotten from people, that they are pleased to see that we are finally doing more mill and overlay, we are addressing road issues which are a big problem throughout the city. So they are happy that we are moving in that direction. And I think anything that we can do that continue to increase that will, will be a win-win for the public. They'll see it that way.
I think when we look at what, what's taking place in the city, the, the streets get the most recognition because we're all driving them. But the whole trend that's taking place with the water treatment plant upgrades, the, the water line improvements we're looking at, the improvements of the treatment plant, the infrastructure in general, that all this is continuing the philosophy. We're not focusing in on one area and saying streets is our big push. But in, in looking at what we're planning for the next 10 years is a comprehensive of all services to the city. I think, Kelly, you've done an excellent job in wording the, the categories for special use sales tax. It, it gives us direction, firm direction where we've talked about going, but also flexibility in the use to address those areas. And that's what we're continuing looking at. And, you know, with the Economic Development Transportation Fund and the capital project reserve, it gives us more latitude. I, I think reducing the debt payment 7% and putting it in streets appears to be doable at this time. What, I wonder if our approach would be to, say, give the staff the direction to, to review in detail then? If we make these changes to the percentages and consider the capital project reserve, because initially when it was established was a reserve for large equipment like a fire truck or ambulance and streets to start building a reserve. Well, if we're going to have that reserve, if those items covered with a special use sales tax, then we can back that off in my thinking that let's use it now as a stopgap to transition from the two plans. So if we incur more bonds for now, we can draw from that source also or the street project, something. Maybe allow staff to look at it and report back Thursday at our commission meeting if these figures seem to be doable.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay.
And, and just something else to throw out there on that 500,000 on the streets and sidewalks, that would be also for some sidewalks. And I would like to look and propose a cost share for a residential sidewalk program based on income levels, on how much the percentage share would be to get some of these residential sidewalks addressed. Because we've gotten behind in that area as well. And then also you need to think about, we may have some storm sewer issues that come up because our storm sewer system's quite old, that I anticipate will probably come out of that category as well. So I just wanted to throw that out there for you.
Yeah, that'd be good. So is that enough direction on that for you, Kelly, for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then, before we, we go on to the next item, why don't we take a, a five-minute, oh, what's recess until about 10:35? Is that acceptable?
I second that motion.
Yeah, I third it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll resume at 10:35.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, it's time to call the meeting back in, in session. So, next item on our agenda is reports, July 2020 sales tax report. Commissioners, we have it before us. It looks like we've got an increase over last year's July receipts and just a slight increase over receipts that we received from, from June. So this would be a reflection of May sales?
Two months prior.
Okay. And tracking for the year, where, am I reading this right? 3.7% ahead of what we projected?
Yes.
Three point, isn't it 3.1?
Yes, down here at the bottom, projected percentage over?
Yeah, 3.7% over what we collected in 2019.
And to answer the Mayor's question, projected percent over?
7.8% higher than what we budgeted to receive.
Okay, 7.8% higher than budgeted?
And then we're 62.9% of year-to-date of budget collected for the year. So that's good.
So with this being May, when any effect from the closures of, due to COVID, that would start being reflected possibly in next month's receipts?
I think it'd be reflected in this month's receipts.
In May's?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Because I think we were closed during, a couple of weeks during May.
It's just hard to believe that this has gone on as long as it has.
Yeah.
And with, you know, depending on what's done with the stimulus and the additional funds on the unemployment, which is additional funds that, you know, people have to expend, we don't know how that's going to affect because that additional $600 has ended, and it's unknown for sure how that's going to be increased, but that could affect consumer spending as well.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sure we're going to see the effect of the increased spending on that, which is all we need to carry us through, so we'll just have to wait and see with this. Commissioners, got any questions for Kelly or David on?
I was, I was trying to speculate myself on what would cause in this what would be otherwise characterized as an economic downturn, that our sales tax revenues would go up. Other than speculating yourself, I can't imagine. Certainly additional income would drive additional spending. But one concept that we might, I don't know how we would investigate it, is that is that we had computed in one of our studies the amount of leakage that happens as people travel elsewhere to do purchases, and as people stay at home, therefore would leakage, this is my assumption, would leakage to other locales go down during a stay-at-home type of environment where people are staying closer to home, not traveling as far, and doing more local shopping?
Even if they do?
Is that even, is that a relevant logic, or is that kind of somehow flawed?
Yes, and also if they're ordering things online rather than going out and getting them, you know, they're delivered here, so they pay this local sales tax in most cases, like the big, the big ones like Amazon and Walmart or whatever do charge a local sales tax, so you're also, if that has increased, you're going to get additional revenue as well.
I know that the shopping opportunities in the metropolitan areas are attractive, and people leave to go to do that, but as we have stayed closer to home and tried to avoid, or include social distancing in our daily choices, that would include not traveling to a mall someplace where you don't know what your exposure is going to be, so it's an assumption on my part, I'm just speculating, but I'm thinking shopping local has possibly increased because of COVID. Anyway, it's good news.
Yeah, I like the numbers that I'm seeing, and I think, I think we'll even see better numbers the next two months. I know in talking with the car dealerships, they had a rough spell to where they weren't moving any vehicles at all, and now they've increased how you can actually buy a vehicle. You can purchase this without ever setting foot on a dealership. And when I checked with them here a couple of weeks ago, they were selling cars, they were moving cars, and the business has really picked up, so I'm very optimistic about the next two months, what the sales report is going to look like, sales tax, and I think we'll still see an increase at least for the next two months and...
And the car, different car companies are having some really good incentives
Yes.
on financing and things to purchase vehicles right now, too.
Yes. It's good news.
Yeah, I wish we could get that actual data, there's so much right now, and and looking in the future because the incentives are going to go away. And what area was it? It's, it was amazing to go to the store and see empty shelves.
Empty shelves?
Yeah, that, it's something that I never imagined would happen in a lifetime, but the reality was here, and it's slowly turning around, but, you know, if we, if we knew where that spending went, it would help us know in the future how to watch our receipts and how to be prepared. But maybe as we go forward, there will be a release in the market. I've got some friends that do deliver for some of the package companies, and they are working six days a week trying to deliver product. I know that there's been a swing from going out of town to pick up to shopping online. But, okay, if there's no further questions about our sales tax receipt, how about the treasures report? The Peter Pan geometric, we're showing a a deficit in that fund, is that from uncollected KDOT reimbursement?
Correct, yeah, and also the county and Labette Health, I believe, are paying for that project as well.
Okay. Have they been mid-build, or how's that being handled?
I think this last month was the last disbursement that we had on that project, so I think we're we'll be moving into billing phase and everything.
And there may be some additional drainage improvements that we've talked about that Sean's may need to bring back related to that project, too, and I have not gotten anything back from him yet. I did email him about that again last week.
Okay.
But, so there could be some additional expenses on that project to correct some drainage issues.
So any further questions concerning the treasures report?
Just out of curiosity, incubator building, account number nine, we show receipts in that, we haven't been showing receipts in that, and I was wondering whether there was what that, what we were receiving against that account?
Is that the interest?
No, I don't think it'd be that much. I would have to go back and look, I'm not quite sure what that was. It might have been like a reimbursement
Okay.
thing on that, I'm not sure, but I can get back with you on that.
Thank you for checking on that for me. I'm going to talk to you now about the total down here. One of the, one of the lines that I don't recognize is reconciled items here below the total. What is, what is that value?
We, that is, credit card charges is kind of a timing issue.
Okay. So you have a cutoff between when the, when the items actually
When they're expensed and when they're paid.
Purchased is recognized and the payment is made?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that helps me. And then also, in the total, we see about a $222,000 reduction in the city's funds during this quarter. And I'm backing out the impact of the Housing Authority. In general, do do we expect that to persist, or is that just mostly related to the incubator building? I think it's perhaps related to a reduction in value from the incubator building fund. That would be fund number nine.
I believe that would probably be...
So really, we didn't have a reduction, if we just held that account separate, we had a slight increase in total funds on hand excluding the reduction in the, in account number nine?
Correct.
Thank you very much, that's actually the right direction, and then the there's a couple of, well, I'm going to stop there, I think I got my answers to the questions I have. Thank you.
So the, in the general fund, which was fund number one, is $1,068,889.89, so that would be cash on hand?
Yes.
Okay, so that's an improvement from the previous. I think we were 800 and, anyway, yeah, that's an improvement.
Yes.
Good.
Do, I do have one more question, and that is the ending balances here that we see. Does this translate into cash? This is actually an amount of cash that we have in an account someplace?
Yes, that is the actual cash balance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, any further questions?
I'm good.
Okay. If there's no further questions regarding that, that was the last item on our agenda, so with that, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, meeting adjourned.